And before we have a roll call vote, I want to let you know that if anyone is interested in speaking during the public comment section, we have a sign up sheet on the table in the back. So if you'd sign your name, please, and indicate which agenda item you plan to speak about, anyone whose name is not on the list will not have opportunity to speak. So it's to the right of the bookcase as you walk in the door. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Bassett? Mr. Clifford?
Present.
Mr. Conell?
Here.
Mrs. Gillette? Mr. Lombardi?
Here.
Mr. Raymond?
Here.
Mrs. Nato?
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda, we have some awards for students.
I'm going to read the recipients, and if you could just allow me to read about them before we recognize and applaud, that would be awesome. So it's an honor for me to recognize from NSCS Tonight, a leadership award, which is presented to first grade grader Allison Ally Remica. Ally was nominated by our teacher, Mrs. Foster, who is also here tonight. Ally is a leader both in and out of the classroom. She is looked up to by others and is always willing to help a friend. Ally puts the needs of others before her own. If a classmate needs academic assistance or just a friend to play with, Ally is quick to recognize this and react with kindness and compassion. Ally is also an excellent role model. She gives 100 percent effort in everything she does. Congratulations, Ally, on this well-deserved leadership award. Keep up the good work.
We can come to you.
The Halliwell Reach Recognition Program Award is being presented to third grader Preston from Supa. Preston has been nominated for this award by his teacher, Ms. Giariso. Preston is a creative, kind, and empathetic child. He works hard in class and takes great pride in his work. His peers love how he is able to make them smile when they're feeling down and how he can create fun games at recess. He is a wonderful child, comes to class with a big smile on his face, excited to learn each and every day. Preston is truly loved by his peers, who have a blast making up creative games with him at recess. It makes Ms. Giariso smile to see Preston and his friends joyfully running around the playground or on the field, laughing and having a grand old time together. During writing, Preston comes up with stories that are full of excitement and adventure. Ms. Giariso also looks forward to reading anything Preston writes and loves viewing his exceptional illustrations that go with them. Preston is one talented artist, and all his classmates admire his talent. Preston is a role model to his peers and the ultimate star student of Halliwell Memorial School. Mrs. Daniel thinks he might be one of the best student artists she has ever seen. He can use a stick figure to illustrate a vocabulary word. Preston always has a smile on his face and a kind word. Preston is currently undergoing treatment at Hasbro Children's Hospital after being diagnosed with leukemia in early December. Congratulations, Preston. You truly reach for the stars. Dana will take his award on his behalf.
I'm going to deliver it to the family.
Middle school, Ryan Walsh, seventh grade student, is this year's winner of the Geography Bee. Ryan competed against many other middle school students. Contestants had to answer questions from a variety of geographic topics, from world to regional geography. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Ryan Walsh for this significant accomplishment, and we wish him well as he goes on to compete at the state level. Congratulations, Ryan, winner of the 2016 Geography Bee at North Smithfield Middle School. Ms. LaHart taking it on his behalf? We kind of thought that. Excuse me. At the high school, Samantha Kent, senior, is student of the month. Sam scored 1,000 career points on December 23rd at home against Narragansett and became only the third female basketball player to join a 1,000-point club. She has been a varsity basketball player all four years of her high school career, playing three years for North Smithfield and playing her junior year at St. Andrews Prep School. She has been named the captain of the girls' basketball team this year and is currently pursuing her next accomplishment, which is to finish her high school career as the all-time female basketball scorer in high school history. She just passed Amy Lavoy and trails only Linda Semino by less than 150 points. Congratulations, Samantha. We know you'll accomplish your goal on the basketball court. We wish you all the best.
This is Mrs. Kent. Sam can't be here tonight because she's out of basketball. So she's going to accept the award.
Thanks for coming.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone here that wants to speak that hasn't yet signed up, now would be the time to do that. We've allotted 15 minutes for this point in the agenda. There are four people who would like to speak, so you'll each have four minutes to speak. Would one of my colleagues like to time each person?
Cheryl. She's facing the clock.
Leanne's got a time. Could you let them know when they have a minute left?
David Low, AD Hyview Avenue, North Smithfield. I'd like to talk about an item in the old business when it comes to DATCO bus issue. It's come to my attention that Mr. Clifford has been having a investigation on DATCO's buses in the town of North Smithfield. It's also got a police report here as far as the police pulled him over when he was in a parking lot and addressed the issue. My problem is, was the school committee sanctioned Mr. Clifford to do this investigation? And most of all, I would hope to thank that he didn't drive and follow all these buses around, putting any harm or fear into the kids, especially in today's day and age with everything that's going on. So my question is, was that authorized by the school committee for Mr. Clifford to do what he's being, was looked at? I have a report here, the police report, if you like, and I'm looking for a response on that.
This isn't very well there, right? No, it's just a public comment on agenda items.
Yes. So I can't get answered for the question that did the school committee itself give authorization to Mr. Clifford for doing his so-called investigation and physically following the bus routes? In addressing his position as a school committee person in the report?
Well, there's a minute and 40 seconds left.
Maybe we should hold response until when the item comes up?
Yeah.
You know, if that's, if he's asking a question and he wants an answer. The answer is, the school committee, best of my knowledge, did not vote on any matter in regards to that.
Now, school committee members shall deal with the town administration team, the superintendent, when it comes to any issues. Now, Mr. Clifford has a right to go and just perform any kind of investigation he feels still. This is all legit, there's no problem. Because I have a severe, a severe problem with it because with the actions of Mr. Clifford in the past, calling certain meetings to bring people in back meeting rooms to address the mental stability of people and their job performance, I think we should have a...
I think this is getting off topic.
I don't. I have a problem with what's going on.
I understand that, but this segment of the agenda is to address items for public comment on agenda items. So we're getting away...
So he's allowed to have close meetings with them. I would bring...
We're getting away from the DATCO bus contract issue. There's another item at the end of, very end of the agenda where you can comment on anything that you wish.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
The next person who signed up is Michael Rapko.
Good evening. It's Michael Rapko, 25 Oak Green Road. I am a member of the budget committee, but I am speaking as a citizen. So input I may give to the budget committee, but it's, again, it's my personal feeling. There's multiple issues on the old business. It's unfortunate, we had a pre-budget committee meeting scheduled for October 26th, and we couldn't complete that meeting with the town council, the school committee, and the budget committee because of the absence of certain people. It's unfortunate, we're three months behind schedule, we should have had that meeting. The same issues at that meeting are on your agenda tonight. Talk about the spending of surplus funds, the energy bond, and a multitude of issues that should have been brought up three months ago, and we never followed up on that issue. So I'd like to see that we can follow up on some of those issues before they get out of hand. In terms of spending of surplus funds in your agenda, the issue at hand, I think, is that the response from Ride is a very, very general response. It says you must follow applicable law. The question is, who's going to make the ruling on applicable law? We have a difference of opinion, a legal opinion, between the council and the school committee. I'd like to see us work together, that we can get our solicitors together, go to the Department of Education, and get a ruling as to what applicable law you should be following when you're spending surplus funds. We didn't do that. It was supposed to happen, it didn't happen. I think it's a prerequisite that that should be done before you start spending large quantities of money. I don't have an issue that if you're spending surplus funds from this year's budget, if you're staying within the appropriation, it's your call as to what you want to do with those funds as long as you're staying within this fiscal year. But to go back into prior fiscal year, looking at surplus funds that have been accumulated over multiple years, I think that's becoming a legal issue for the council and the budget committee, of spending surplus funds from prior fiscal years. So I think we should be clear about when you're spending funds, surplus funds, whether you're going to take them out of the existing appropriation for this year, or whether you're going to be taking those funds out of prior year's surplus. That may cause a big legal question for both council and school committee. But the Department of Education has asked that you can create a, you can come to a formal hearing. I don't know who should ask for the formal hearing. I don't know if it's the council, I should ask the council to send the solicitor to a formal hearing, or should we try to work together, send both solicitors? Send them both to a formal hearing? In terms of some other items on the agenda, the DATCO, I did have a lot of contact with Mike Clifford on this issue. I'd be glad to speak as a witness if there is a discussion about the DATCO, whether it's the schedules, whether it's Mike Clifford's personal involvement. I have a lot of information, if you want to discuss it at that time, I'd be glad to stand up here and tell you what's happening, and you can question me under oath or whatever you want to do. I'd be glad to respond, to clarify. There's a lot of misunderstanding of what Mike Clifford did during this whole process.
We have one minute left.
Okay, and I can clarify it. In terms of other issues on this, it's probably it for now, and I guess if there's any public comment available as we start the discussion, I'd be glad, if I have the opportunity to come up and make some comments. Thank you.
Mr. Conell would like to briefly address your comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond, we've gotten, we've gotten two opinions from two different commissioners. They've both spoken to this issue about the deficit or the funding. Letters, two different commissioners have come to the same conclusion. Ken Wagner's position was whether or not facing this projected year deficit, the school committee can properly expend a carry for its surplus in the following year or some later year without first obtaining the authorization or reappropriation of the town council, assuming, of course, the expenditure otherwise permitted under applicable law. And applicable law for us and on the school committees, I've always understood, and in fact, I'm going to go, is the general law. And Rhode Island General Law, 16-7-23, A and B, both provide that surpluses are basically, once appropriated, whether it's a surplus or not, it's the school committee's funds. Now, whether somebody wants to change that policy, that's something that can be debated, but I don't think there's a question of the law, respectively.
There are other sections of law that are going to conflict with that, because I have a general law, 16-9, section 16-9-1, it's related to the role of the town treasurer, which is the fiscal, I mean, the finance director, as to what he's supposed to be doing to monitor the school committee and the expenditures. That general law says you can't spend more than you're given. And then, on the town charter, which you didn't mention, which is another applicable law, what the duties of the finance director are. And that law is, if you want to look at it, it's Article 7, Section 2, powers and duties of the director of finance. Those two laws work together, that I quoted, both the responsibilities of the finance director under state law and under town charter. It's both related to not spending more than what's appropriated. So that's the law I'm looking at. I did look at some of your articles, but this law, at least it's...
I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
But at least it's bringing the two laws together, the state general law and the local town charter. It's working together, those two laws work together.
Like, fair enough, we just agreed as...
That's why I think solicitor, I think both solicitors should go to the Department of Education and get a response on these issues.
But you said we've gotten two response letters already.
But it says applicable law to the interpretation. What is the applicable law? That's the issue. What is the law?
Thank you, Mr. Rapko. And I did want you to know that once the regular agenda begins, there is no opportunity for public, public comment. The next person who signed up to speak is Bethany Levin about accepting the award on behalf of Sam Kent.
Bethany?
I think she already...
Okay.
Ms. Levin, are you here? Sure accepted.
Okay. The last person who signed up is Carol Drainville, who would like to speak about the charter.
I'm not sure that this is the forum, I mean, the handle list, because it doesn't specifically address an item on the agenda. It's just a charter item that I'm concerned about that I...
I don't think this would be the appropriate...
So what avenue do you think I should take on this? I'd like to speak to the school committee about this.
At the end of the meeting, there's an opportunity for the public to offer comment on anything. It doesn't have to be with specific regard to the agenda.
Okay, other than that, is there some other time I could do this?
Not unless the item appeared on the agenda, no.
So I could apply?
Oh, you could send a letter for the school committee.
All right.
Can I ask, what do you want to address? What is it that you want to address?
I want to address the part of the charter that, that tells the school committee exactly the procedure to follow when they are addressing items that it goes. It's Section 5, Number 3. Except for the purpose of inquiry, the school committee and its members shall deal with the administration of the public schools solely through the superintendent. And neither the school committee nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the superintendent of schools, either publicly or privately. And at the November meeting, I heard a comment, and this one was Mr. Clifford, who said, he sent Lisa, Lisa Markcott, the business manager, an email, he asked her to reach out to the bus company and get an explanation. And I don't know how often this kind of thing happens, but this kind of thing impedes the working of the school department. Everything should go through the superintendent. I'm concerned, because we've got a high school on warning, and if this happens, if this is a common practice, then I think that the school committee should be aware that they're violating the charter and putting the people on, in the superintendent's office in a compromising situation, because they really should be telling school committee member who asks them specifically to do a task that they can't do it. So it should be, the school committee, I think, should be aware that proper procedure in business, that's the business model that most businesses use, is going through the leadership and then down. So that's my comment. I'm very concerned about the high school being on warning, and I want the school department to be able to do it to the best of their ability.
Following the new format of the consent agenda, the next item on the agenda is, includes eight items. Are there any, any of those eight items that anyone would like to discuss before we vote?
Madam Chair, I'd like to vote separately on the dispersment report.
What, what letter is that?
Three.
Three, okay.
5C, the procurement policy, and 6A, the bylaw.
Are there any other items that someone would like to exempt from the motion, Bill?
Madam Chair, I'm just not going to vote on the minutes that I compete I wasn't here for, so I don't need to vote them separately, but I'm just not going to vote on those. The record can just reflect that I'm not going to, I'm not voting on the minute competes I wasn't here for, instead of, so we don't have to do a separate vote when that's in time.
Okay. Anyone else? Would someone like to make a motion to approve all the items except for 3, 5C, and 6A as submitted?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So moved.
And if the, maybe it just reflected I did not vote on, I was not voting on it.
Mr. Tech, what's a, what's a basketball shooting machine?
It shoots basketball.
Isn't that what the players are supposed to do?
Wait, John, let's stick to the agenda.
Why, it's on the agenda.
But it's not next. We have to do number three. Mike, you had a...
It is, it's number eight. It's number eight.
Yeah, but you just voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You just voted for it, but I want, it's a donation, so I just want to know what a machine put in. Does it shoot basketball?
Yeah, it's a machine that takes all rebounds in and fires them, maximize, and shoots them. They want ranks.
Okay.
I'm sorry, John.
Okay, Mike, number...
Okay. I mean, thank you to the NSAA for donating that.
Yes, it's a real nice item. I mean, I haven't seen this one, but they're very useful for the kids, especially when they're just shooting around with just a couple of kids or just one kid, they're very useful to have, so. Thanks a lot.
Mike?
Okay, first, I'd like to approve payment with one notation, and then I'd like to withdraw for consideration of payment, one invoice. But I want to note that on page 44 of the dispersment report, under simplex Grinnell, on the second page, on page 45, it explains it was an emergency service call for fire alarm panel at MS, and I questioned that today because it was the same amount that their quarterly contract payment is. So I brought it to Mrs. Nolan's attention, and she's making an adjustment. So you're really not approving payment for a service call, you're approving the quarterly payment. Okay? And secondly, I would like to, I don't want to vote in favor of paying the DATCO invoice for the over hours for this month in the amount of $7,281.19. I'd like to vote on that separately from the rest of the payments. Everything else can be paid except for, I guess I'll make that as a motion, I'd like to make a motion to pay all bills with the exception of the over, extra over hours charged by DATCO in the amount of $7,281.19. Michael, page? Page 15 is the DATCO stuff. And I just, I feel like, is it on page 15? Did you check, John, to find it? Yeah, those four over hours, 1, 2, 3, 4. They're billed separately. Halliwell, NSES, Regular Red, Mid School, Middle School, and the High School.
Is this the first packet or the second?
First, yeah.
Is that the amount? Lisa, did I read the correct amount for the total? Could you just verify that? Is that, is that the right amount, Lisa?
She's checking.
And are these line items in there, or are these broken? I'll have to break these out of the list. You know, are there particular line items?
It's, it's four particular charges that total that dollar amount.
I mean, top four.
Yes, the top four.
$7,289.19. No.
Maybe I wrote down the wrong number. Can you try that again?
I had $7,289 as well.
Eighty, oh, I'm sorry. It is...
I don't have it on me.
I can't get my writing phase in.
$7,289.19.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to be seven, I'm sorry, can you read it to me again?
$7,289.19.
I amend my motion to be, that is the amount. I think it's important to document at this point, since this, these charges were paid last year as well, and there's an item later in the agenda that addresses this, I don't want to appear that we were in agreement with these payments for legal purposes. So that's why I'm making the motion that we approve all other invoices with that exception.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Lombardi?
Superintendent, do you have any comments on this? Is this addressed later in the agenda?
Yeah. Mr. Lombardi, I, I don't really know the pros and the cons. I'm thinking about it here, because this is the first we're aware of this tonight, unless Lisa was told earlier. I think you do have something in your packet that shows we've made some progress we're not done yet. Mr. Mayor's done a great job the last two or three weeks, and we sit with them again on Friday to continue our work. And, you know, if it becomes a legal issue, then that's your call. I just think that, and it, I don't know if it'll get there, but I guess our styles are different. You know, maybe I haven't worked fast enough for you all, but I think we've made some inroads and we're not done yet. I don't, I'm trying to sort out what this accomplishes, because we do have one letter where we're going to get credit.
It doesn't address last year.
I'm sorry, please?
That letter doesn't address the overpayments last year, which add up to a substantial number. So I just want to document for myself, if other people want to vote for it, but I want to document that I object to that charge, because I don't believe we're legally obligated to pay it.
I respect that, Mike. I think, you know, we're, I don't want to, what's it says? We have already, Mr. Mayor and I have already discussed what DATCO about last year, and we're working on that, and we're waiting for a response. I don't know what to tell you. You know, right or wrong, it's not my style to impugn a company or their reputation... a company or their reputation. I'd rather see how far we can get.
Let me just ask, let me just ask you, I guess, another question. Is the whole amount in question, or is it possibly some portion of it?
It's a portion. It's just the overhours.
No, I know, but is it all of the overhours or just part of the overhours that are in question?
Yeah, I don't believe it's all the, all the overhours, I think it's part of it. That's my opinion at this point. I know Mr. Mayor was here, if he has a different opinion, I certainly will go along to that if the chair allows him to speak, so.
Thank you.
I can say that we have a really good relationship, working relationship with DATCO, and any credits that we do agree on, they're very forthcoming with those credits, and they're very quick to turn them around. So if it does turn out that they, we are in agreement that they owe us those overhours going back a year, I don't foresee any problem getting that credit. We do have an ongoing contract with them, and it's not like we're not going to get another invoice that they would be able to credit these on.
So I'll tell you what, listening to Lisa's statement, I'd be willing to amend my motion and Jim's comments to withhold the amount of $2,408, because that's the, I believe, the portion that is attributed to the pre and post bus inspections of the total seven thousand and change of overhours.
So you want to reduce it by there now?
Well, actually, no, because I still don't believe we pay the overhours. I'm going with my original motion.
To the chair, yeah, because it'll, yeah, it might get a little messy, Mike, considering we already have a letter where they're issuing, I guess, close to a $25,000 credit for this year, and we're already talking to them about next year. Yeah, I guess, to the chair. If I can just have thirty more seconds for Mr. Lombardi's question, I, maybe we'll say this, you know, I got a call about thirty, forty minutes ago from the, one of the chief operating officers of DATCO in Bristol, Connecticut, and it was a very professional call, just wanted to let me know he had been contacted by someone from the Valley Breeze because a school committee member went to the Valley Breeze with all kinds of information. So he at least, he told me his response, it was very professional, and he assured me that he looked forward to continuing working with us on Friday, and whatever it is, however it works out, they're committed to working it out. I guess I'm saying that...
Do you think it hinders your negotiations in any way?
I'm sorry, please?
Do you think it hinders your negotiations?
You know, John, I don't know, it's a little bit of new territory, but I do know that I feel like if, if you need legal counsel, well, if you want legal counsel, well, the way to do that is to close session, make a decision, and then, I don't know what's gained by trying to, I don't know what's gained...
It's a tactic, it's a tactic, I don't know if it's the right tactic.
Yeah, I don't, you know, if we had somebody that...
I don't think there's any tactic. I think the request is for complete accountability. And I think part of the problem is, all these negotiations, the school committee has not been privy to the details. And the memo that's in our packet for this week does not address the overtime hours, it addresses, I believe, the issue of post and pre-inspections, which is a separate issue.
Isn't that a nice start, though? Isn't that a nice start?
I don't know. We've been, for a year and a half, we've been paying overtime charges in the amount anywhere from seven to $10,000 a month, without any accountability to date for those line items. That's what I think the real issue, this isn't a tactic, it's not a ploy, it's just simply a request for DATCO to get real and tell us what's going on. And we have the agenda item on closed session, and we have it later on. In the meantime, we have a motion for Mr. Clifford to withhold payment for now, for this particular overtime check amount, and the motion was seconded.
May I ask something?
Yes.
Seeing how this is on our agenda for later, and maybe more information will come, is it possible to put this, however this vote goes, is it possible to re-vote again later in the agenda when it comes up again, or can we only vote no?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't either.
No, you can't, once you vote, it's over, but if the vote doesn't pass, then you can motion to continue it until later on in the agenda.
If you exempt payment of that check right now and approve all the other payments, can we not revisit payment of that check later on in the actual agenda?
Just later in the agenda, that's all I'm looking for.
Somebody may be able to re, motion to reconsider, but I don't like that, I don't like seeing that in a, in a public agenda, because once you vote, it's final, and people can, and then people leave, and then you motion to reconsider later in the meeting, it doesn't, I don't think it's...
Can we change the language of the motion?
You just motion to continue it until later in the meeting, so everybody knows that it's going to be...
Make a motion to continue that particular payment of that check, or payment of the entire...
Either way.
It's your motion, what would you like to do?
I don't quite understand how that, well, first of all, I take exception to the word negotiate, because I believe when you don't owe a fee, and it's not called for in the contract, you're not negotiating, you're just requesting that we only pay what we're legally obligated to pay for. And I don't see where we're obligated to pay for that. And again, I question the total numbers of extra hours that we are paying with, again, as you said, Mrs. NATO, no real verification at this point. So I'm doing, I'm making my motion based on my belief that if this were my bill at home, I would demonstrate clearly that I will not pay a bill that I don't think I'm legally obligated to pay. And I don't consider it negotiating, I consider it paying the bill that you are responsible for.
So I, I think, Mike, with the respect to the discussion that was just going on, is instead of making a motion now, you can continue it until that item?
But can...
And then make whatever motion at that point you need.
At that, at that point in the agenda, Jim, it would be after the closed session meeting? And can we address it after the closed session meeting?
No, it wouldn't, it would be, there's a DATCO bus contract is on, or do you...
But yeah, of course, yes, as long as the meeting is, you can do it anytime in the meeting, as long as the public is aware that we're continuing some future point in the meeting, so if they want to hear it, they can stay around.
No, I think he's talking about...
So you could make a motion to continue it until after we get out of executive session?
I can make a motion to continue it until after we get out of the executive session.
That's what Jim said.
Okay, are you sure, Jim?
Yes.
Would you like to revise, would you like to...
As long as it's in public, I mean, after...
Will we come back?
Right, after we're back out, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'll, well, then, so what'll we do about the rest of the payment of invoices?
I think you just table the whole thing on the dispersment until the end of the meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table it until the...
Mike said it.
The payment of the dispersment we have to remove.
You have to take...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw, second.
And I'll now make a motion to table this until after the executive session, when we reconvene.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Mr. Conal?
No.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes. Thank you. The next item that was withheld from the consent agenda vote was item five C, a bylaws, number two C, on procurement. I had a, Lisa, who's the current purchase officer, purchasing officer? We don't have one?
No, I don't think so.
But in the current, do we have a procurement policy now, other than this one in front of us? Yeah.
Under section three?
Lisa's primarily, Mike, doesn't need...
So to end your question, this, Mike, this is, this was our purchasing policy under section, section eight, on page eight of nine, there was just one paragraph that we needed to add for the federal grants.
But on page three, is that new language that's underlined? I'm, I'm sorry, on page two, section three. What's underlined, is that new language?
No. The new language is that one paragraph.
Just that one paragraph. Well, I was actually, my motion is, I want to table this until next month for reading, because under section two, on page one, it lists the categories of people who purchases and contracts and other agreements shall not be made with by a member of the North Smithfield School Committee Officer or employee to a business or organization owned or substantially owned by the same unless the superintendent determines in writing. I want to present some information to the school committee at our next meeting. I paid for, under the APRA, records of invoices with people who were serving on the facility, the facilities committee and doing business with the, getting contracts with the town and purchasing. So I would like to present a case at next month's meeting by providing you with the information that I put together, that we should expand the prohibition of bidding on certain contracts to one other classification, or whatever you want to say, one other group in some limitation. I think it, it's inappropriate for, well, I think what I demonstrate and present to you next month may be enlightening to you, and I think it, it supports the idea that it's, this language in section two should be expanded.
Madam Chair, just so I'm clear, so there, there's someone or an organ, so there's an organization or a business that was a school committee member, or an officer, or employee, is that it?
No, I want to expand it to say, basically, if you're serving on the facilities advisory committee.
Oh, I see.
And I want to set parameters for, you know, what the amount of the contract would be, that, you know, maybe you can do $2,000 worth of business without having to exclude yourself from serving on that committee, or just...
I mean, if that's a concern, you might just want to eliminate anybody that's serving on a voluntary committee to the school committee, if that's what you want to do. Because frankly, you know, I, I know who you're talking about, and, or I know the people you're talking about, and I value them tremendously, and we couldn't have gotten a cheaper price, and sometimes going with people you trust and they're a low bidder, phenomenal. But, I mean, if that's your concern, then just put it in.
I'd just like to present the information that I collected from reviewing those invoices with the whole committee, let them see what the numbers are that we're talking about here, because we're talking about, you know, in one case, hundred, over $100,000 worth of contracts. And I would like them to be the judge as to whether that should be included as a, as a prohibition or not. And I think the only way to do that is to give a good presentation with all the documentation and let them see what numbers we're talking about, and then they can judge themselves. So I'm just asking to table this until the next meeting, and at the next meeting, I'll put in the packets the information that I've presented and collated that everybody can take a look at, and then I'll give an explanation of how I'd like the new language in section two defined. So that's why I'm making a motion to table this at this time.
Is there a second?
Second, it's, continue.
To continue till February? All in favor?
Award of Federal Grants from RIDE was, it specified right in there that we had to have this policy approved by January 31st, so I notified David Luther and told him that we would have the first reading and the second reading would be in February.
What, what section is that, Lisa?
The only thing we added was on page eight of nine, under section eight, any vendor that has been disbarred or suspended or otherwise excluded from, or are ineligible for participation in federal programs will be disqualified from engaging in any contract with the North Smithfield School Department for which federal funds have been awarded. The North Smithfield School Department is prohibited from utilizing federal funds to pay for any such vendor.
Okay, but I, well, we already voted on table, yeah? No, we didn't vote, we didn't vote yet. Oh, I thought we did.
No, there was a motion and a second.
Okay, so could we, could I withdraw my motion to table it for now? Could I, could we vote on just section eight, amend the policy this evening to section eight, and table discussion on the other parts until next month's meeting?
No, you have to have the whole policy in place.
No, you have to have that policy in effect.
If we need another meeting...
I suggest you approve it and put it on the agenda the next meeting for review, because you can amend it then.
Yeah, you can change it.
You can review any of them, please.
Yes, yes, sure.
I don't like what you did with the bylaws, it kept coming back.
Yeah, it came back.
Do you want to amend your motion, Mike?
Two.
And we'll have the second reading in February, at which time we can...
Well, I don't want to vote for this policy as a whole with that in there, so I'll just vote against, I mean, we can, you can make a motion to...
You gotta withdraw.
Withdraw your motion? Do you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, okay.
But this is the first reading. This is, this is the first reading, so we have, it has to come up for the second reading anyway, so...
Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Could you do a roll call vote, Sherry?
Certainly. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
No.
Mr. Conal?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. NATO?
Yes.
Sherry, could you make a notation that I'm asking to put this on the agenda for next month, so I don't forget to say do the email? And put it on the agenda?
The procurement policy, yeah, it'll be on for second reading anyhow.
Okay.
Okay, the last item that was withheld is item six A, bylaws, the revised bylaws, which we all, I believe, received by email?
Yeah, I just, I, I guess we can continue to try it for a couple more months, but I find that the, keeping the public comments to the end of the agenda, to have to have someone sit here until ten, at ten-thirty at night, you know, I wish there was another way we could just accommodate this, and there is public comment that maybe, you know, does everybody understand what I'm saying? And also, quite honestly...
I agree with you. We agree.
Also, quite honestly, I don't want to sit here at ten-thirty at night after having a lengthy discussion all night about the agenda, and then having to sit, I'm not going to be as attentive as I should have been to what comments are made. So I just don't like having that at the bottom of, at the end of the agenda, be blunt about it. I don't think people are going to get the attention that they would like at that hour. Jim?
I agree with you a hundred percent, that I was going to ask that this be at least looked at. So under public comment, if we strike out comments listed on the agenda only, or move community comments up to the top, either way, I think, I mean, I want to hear from...
Or just change it to good and welfare.
Yeah, okay, good and welfare, sure. The idea is that they both can come up, I think.
What was it before?
Good and welfare.
Okay, so you had it for good and welfare for years, right?
Not me, but the committee, yeah.
Okay, but I mean, yeah, I don't mean you particularly, I'm sorry, but...
It's okay.
And was there a problem with it, that we had to do this, make this change?
No, I think it was in the interest of trying to speed up the meeting.
We're trying to speed up the meeting.
So that was the real motivation for the change?
That was apparently the real motivation, and it was at the suggestion, I believe, of our, of Mr. Scungeo, to give it a try, and so we tried it, and...
All right, so if we approve this for a second reading tonight, can we, we can put it on the agenda again at a later date if it doesn't work?
No, we change the policy.
Yeah, we change it now.
I'm prepared to make a motion to amend.
Make the motion.
Could I make one other comment about another section, or do you have to make an amendment for each change that you... Okay, go ahead. No, mine's about something different.
All right, so if we, if we motion, I'm on page three, we motion to amend item D to state good and welfare. Is that satisfying?
I just want to check the thread, I went, I thought, and I could be wrong, that there was some comment about the AG didn't like that term, I remember hearing that at one of the meetings, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, so I don't, somebody said something about the, something about that phrase, because, something about that phrase I didn't like, and...
Do you think public comment would be...
Public comment under Rhode Island general laws, because there is a section, unfortunately, I didn't know about.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to check with Ben, too, before we make that change. And, and, you know, if somebody wants to discuss something that's not on an agenda, they have the right to submit a letter requesting to be placed on the agenda. So I kind of agree that the public comment should be specific to the agenda items, and if somebody wants to introduce an agenda item, send in the letter and request it be placed on the agenda. I mean, we're always talking about everybody wanting to be prepared and having all the documentation in front of you, so if that's the case, then why would we just, why would we want to hear about a non-agenda item with no specific information included on our packets, so that we won't...
We don't ask for that now, though, at the end of the meeting, you don't have to have submitted anything in advance, if you're a member of the public, Leon?
I think the other piece of this, if I recall from our other meetings, was that people were coming up and they were speaking, and we would just sit here, because we were not allowed to say anything back. And it got very difficult to sit here, where people are going up and pouring their hearts out and asking for things, and we could not respond. So I believe that that was another reason for the change in this. One of them we can respond to, one of them we could not. I think, I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but...
If I may?
Yes.
So I, I think Mrs. Gillette is spot on, I think Ben's feedback was based upon what he's learned from other school committee agendas. I think his comment on good and welfare, at least to me, was that it kind of went all over the place and there was no time, and so if you restore good and welfare, which would make sense, that you provide some guidance in the agenda or the appendix where you prefer comments on agenda items, however, you're going to take others, and if you had a limit of, told like you did tonight, 15 minutes, and it is what it is, the other thing that I think changed, and Mr. Lombardi may know this, but I know Ben knows too, is that you are allowed to comment now on the good and welfare, but years ago you were not, but that did change, it's a little slippery, but you, yeah, so I would defer to Ben on that, but that did change a few years ago.
I, I believe it did, as long as good welfare is on the agenda, I believe that you can, I believe, and I'm only going off memory, that you now can respond to that.
You can't...
But if somebody were to get up in the audience and ask a question, then you would not be able to respond unless it was on the agenda.
The concern, my concern has always been from talking to AGs in the seminars I've attended, is that, yes, technically you can respond in good and welfare, but they're, they're worried about, what the concern is that you start to get a couple of people getting into it, and then you're in a debate, and now suddenly you've gone from just one person responding to suddenly, now you're debating an item that wasn't on the agenda. Now you're going, now you're going to be violated, like a simple yes/no response. So, you know, I'll make a quick suggestion, why don't we just, I think we know what we want, we want to be able to, be able to have the public speak, and we like to interact with them, you know, and when they speak, have it in a way that we can respond to them, just ask Ben again, we don't want to split these up, I'm sure, I think we're making, I'm sure he can draw something up very quickly and resolve the issue for us.
Okay, so we're going to ask him to take a look at that, the language, and make the change, or, have you read, Sherri?
Can you say something, Mary?
Sure.
The, the reason right now why public comment on agenda items is at the beginning of the meeting, and the community comment is at the end, was when we originally started talking about doing consent agenda, what we did was we gathered some agendas from neighboring towns. This agenda is mimicked after Lincoln. Lincoln prefers to run their meetings that way, and we kind of mimicked it, I don't think there was any reason other than that, and then when we looked at it, we thought we would try it. So, I don't think any of this is written in stone, and I think it's very easily amendable, and I think you could probably, if you wanted to keep the two items separate, just move the community comments up to the beginning also. I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's a problem, this was strictly done just because that's the sample of an agenda we had.
Okay, thanks Sherri.
I don't know if that helps.
Can I ask Bill a question? Based on your comments about what Ben said, would it be best to just table the second reading until we have the conversation with Ben, or he sends us some type of communication and makes a suggestion?
Yeah, maybe, on the president's, on the chair's letters, can you just put a call to the, to Ben, and just have him, just, hey, just give it, you know, check us on this one issue, because I think we're in agreement on what we want to do.
Yeah, okay.
We are in agreement with what we want.
Okay, so then, I'll make a motion to table the second reading.
I just wanted...
Continue it.
Yeah, we don't want table.
Okay, continue it to the next meeting.
I think we already have a motion.
Do we have a motion on the floor, Sherri?
Nobody's seconded it, but Jim did make one.
I'll second. No, no, I don't want to second.
He's letting it die, okay.
I thought the continuing, the continuing is what I was, second, Mike's motion.
So you're, can I just make one comment about, on page five, at the top of the page, of course, the school committee members have an obligation to read and understand the contents of their packet prior to the meeting. We get these packets on Friday, I get home from work at about 6:30, I read the packet over the weekend, if they're especially lengthy, takes most of the meeting, and sometimes Monday night. I realize that the language in the stipulation to contact the superintendent, or the committee chair, the business manager, two business days prior, is prefaced by the word should, but it's awfully hard to do that, I just wanted to point that out, and I'm glad the language says should, but it's, sometimes it's just not even possible.
Yeah, I think the swap rate of it, I think the swap rate of it.
That kind of was mimicked from the rules of order of the town council, that was one of the things they had, we talked about at previous meetings, so, I, and again, you can very easily remove that or amend it.
Well, it says should, it's not a must do it, because it's very, very difficult when the packet is big.
I think we've been fairly nimble on this side, I mean, there's like 40, 50 pages, I think we've been fairly, Lisa's, Lisa's done a great job trying to fill your questions on the night of, I think that's reasonable, but certainly, I think, I respect, whenever you can, I, I hope that you will always contact me in the end of time, that's all.
Well, it does say should, it doesn't say must, but I was just needing to offer that it's a diff, it's a difficult thing to do.
Well, we're continuing it, while we think about it, we're gonna, we're gonna continue it anyway, so we can think about it, and...
So...
I believe, I believe we're gonna continue, I should say.
Did we have a second on the motion?
To what?
Continue.
To continue?
I, I, the men's voices kind of were...
Okay, somebody needs to make a motion.
I made the motion already, to continue it to the next meeting.
I'll, I'll second.
Real second.
So the consent agenda really moved you along?
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's early in the game, once you get it...
It did work last time.
All in favor, are we gonna, opposed, some moves? Next item on the agenda, Mr. Lindberg, superintendent's report.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Sure, just, over a few things. First, I'd like to congratulate our newest second Golden Apple Award recipient again from NSCS, Mrs. Colleen Carr, kindergarten teacher, she received the Golden Apple Award from the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Ken Wagner, Channel 10's Patrice Wood, congratulations to our very talented and dedicated teacher. The North Smithfield School, the North Smithfield School Department was recognized, as you know, just recently by Smart Class as the best up-and-coming school district in the state of Rhode Island. It's new to me, but it's an educational research website that I visited, that provides students, parents, and educators with a great deal of information to research educational options. You have a link if you want to follow up on that, you were provided with the link, that was a pleasant surprise. Of course, as you know, the North Smithfield High School was recently ranked ninth in the state of Rhode Island by Go Local Prove, that would be North Smithfield's highest ranking to date, I believe, again, for more information, you have that link if you want to read more about it. In, in the school district, again, as you know, was notified that we were listed on the AP District Honor Roll, consisting of 425 school districts in the United States and Canada, and that simultaneously achieved increases in access to advanced placement courses for a broader number of students, and also maintain or improve the rate at which their AP students earn scores of three or higher on an AP exam. So the district was one of five Rhode Island schools to achieve that honor. I'll move on, the additional sanders installed and in use, I think we can be happy about that, considering what I'm hearing, coming down the road, we're waiting for the Kubota tractor cows.
It should be tomorrow.
It's what?
It should be ready tomorrow.
Thank you. We begun to, you...
Thanks, Doc.
We participated in a RIDE webinar regarding expansion of access to advanced classes. There are many critical variables with this, and I'm going to ask if the school committee approves that Mr. McGee and Mrs. Arnold update the school committee at the next school committee agenda on this item. You receive information Friday regarding the state education reformula, potential changes, some, some positive changes there. A number of the building principals have begun to participate in the park test coordinated training workshops that are just a joy to participate in. I encourage you to read Mrs. Arnold's update, especially on the science curriculum development and integrating technology into instruction. High school had some really informative pieces on career in tech, technical arts, with especially the English, English language arts, participation of several English classes. In the 2016 Poetry Out Loud competition, Mrs. Fanny Choi, writer, performer, and teaching artist, was our coach, she's a member of Rhode Island State Council of Arts and co-director of the Providence Poetry Slam, and a member of Project Voice, and she's also the author of Floating Brilliant Gone, as well as having her work appear in numerous other publications. Social studies, again, the freshmen in the We the People class are beginning to prepare for this year's state competition, it will be held on Saturday, February 6th, and little, little change here, unlike previous years, the event, this year will be held at the high school, and will begin promptly at 10:00 AM. Students have been working incredibly hard, and are eager to, eager to represent Rhode Island again in the national finals, held in Washington, DC on April 22 and 26, and I noticed Natalie here, and we missed the public comment, but that's okay, maybe they'll make an exception. Special education, really nice to see James Fitzgerald and Christine Welch, co-liaisons of Special Olympics Project Unified, took 15 of our students to a student support leaders' conference at Crown Plaza in Warwick. North Smithfield students, some of whom both led, and others actually listened to guest speakers and collaborated with other students across the state to discuss leadership strategies as well as project unified events. Read about the middle school, good news, and geography, happened to read John's report, really nice piece on the grade six card making, the concert, Spirit Week, and a nice thing that they do every year is presence for residents. We have the after-school chorus preparing for our winter concert tomorrow, held here at the high school, and there is a video link in, I think it's in Mrs., is it in, is it in Mrs. Jones, or is it Mrs. Dano's class, there's a video link, yeah, it's in NSCS, using movement during instruction, it's really pretty cool, and I think, is there a short video on Mrs. Rousseau's class, integrating technology?
There, there's a video on Mrs. Centurion's class using movement in instruction, and there are photos of Miss Rousseau's class.
Did we have a, did we have a video of the integrating technology, or just, just photos?
Just photos.
Okay. Anyways, the video, the video's pretty cool. In tech report, financial server upgrade, wireless classroom initiative phase two, which is grant funded, and a whole lot of the stuff, so I just wanted to highlight a few from the administrator's report, and I think we're ready for our snowstorm when we get it.
May I, Mr. O'Brien, this year?
Yeah, what?
Sure.
Thank you very much for allowing me to take this time to comment. I'm Natalie O'Brien, I'm a teacher here at North Smithfield High School, and I'm the teacher of the We the People program, and I just wanted to share some information that I feel that I've shared with you before, and I will keep it brief. There was a study from the election of 2000 that showed that 82% of We the People alumni voted in that presidential election versus 48% of their peers. There was a study that came out in 2008 that found that We the People students scored 38% higher than their peers, and 30% higher on average than college students on a comprehensive test regarding politics. I've been teaching this program at the high school for 10 years, I think that it is a remarkable opportunity for students to really improve in a variety of areas, not only political knowledge, and then getting involved in civics and political participation moving forward, but obviously their skills in being able to write and communicate intelligently with others, I think is incredibly important. It really aligns, the curriculum aligns to the common core state standards. Recently, in the summer of 2015, the Department of Ed, the Department of Education actually gave a $17 million grant to help train teachers on the We the People program, so it was something that they felt would strongly achieve a lot of the, you know, important objectives that we seek to make sure that we educate young people. So having said all of that, and as we move towards starting to hopefully prepare to move towards Washington, DC, every year I come before you talking about a lot of the financial difficulties, and this year, I believe, in the budget, $1,000 has been allocated to support the students moving towards the opportunity in the national finals, and a lot of the funding that we have relied on in the past is not what it was, and I know that I have this conversation every year, but it doesn't mean anything to the students in my classroom this year that you've supported, you know, financially students in the past, because it really matters a lot to the individuals now. I strongly believe government is a requirement at North Smithfield, which is incredible, because it's not a state requirement, but every student in my class should have the opportunity to go to Washington, DC and participate in the national finals, regardless of their parents' income. And we clearly do a lot to try to compensate for a lot of the inequities that maybe families have, we do a tremendous amount of fundraising, we made over 470 bows and sold wreaths, perhaps some of you purchased some of those fine items. So, so we really do work really hard in the classroom and outside of the classroom, and any additional support that you could provide to the program would be very much appreciated. We generally get $1,800 from the Kiwanis Club, and they are no longer in operation, they gave us our last donation last year, which was incredible, but they no longer have the funds to give us any longer. In, in the past, from the school committee, we've gotten as high as $5,000, and most recently, we would get around $2,000, now we're at about $1,000, I believe has been most recently allocated, so I was just here to speak about the program, if you had questions for me, I could certainly address them. My students will come before you in a formal manner, as they, as they always do next month. I encourage you to try to come to see the students, if you can, on February 2nd and February 6th, I will certainly give the information to Sherri McGann, so it can be forwarded to you, so that way, you know, you're able to take advantage of that opportunity. But, thank you, and, you know, any additional support that you could give to the program would be very much appreciated, by myself and the students.
Thank you, Natalie.
The next item on the agenda is Mrs. Mark's financial report.
Can I, can I comment on the administrator's report? I just wanted to note the PTO donation of 35 Chromebooks at Halliwell, and 35 Chromebooks at the North Smithfield Elementary School, because we have Chromebooks coming up on the agenda later, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had read that.
Yeah, it was, it was nice, the committee recognized that, I think you sent them a letter at the previous meeting, but it's back on tonight because they're coupled with other Chromebook purchases, thank you.
Mrs. Mark?
So, the report in your packet shows you that as of December 31st, we had $1,518,227 left in the budget, committed, and unattended.
Lisa, I'll take this earlier. What page is that on, you have? The final one?
Page four.
I know, I, I...
Oh, you know this one here, you're in the wrong one. This is page four.
The first one, the first report.
Lisa, I thought, I guess, I don't know where I got the impression, but I thought we were going to be piloting the new format that was recommended and provided to you, and it said you were going to try to put that together as a...
So, so this was in addition to that, and we were going to take a second look at that format in February.
Oh, in February, we're getting it?
Correct. Once the projection, point of time projection was done, I can...
Oh, okay, I do remember, I'm sorry.
After the projection, yeah.
So, use some time to catch a breath.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Mark on this particular item?
I was just wondering, no, I guess it's just here, I was looking at the We the People thing, what they have on the board, but this is present at the time, so...
Okay.
We got that covered. Okay, my bad, my bad. We'll get that.
That brings us to old business, item number one, the fiscal year 16 operating budget, the first item is the fiscal year 16 special education census and pupil personnel budget, Mr. Clifford?
Now, Mrs. Rathman wasn't here at the last meeting, and she did provide that explanation, but I, I just want to be clear, so that I can figure out how we get to the numbers, because my question back when we discussed this the first time, where is Mrs. Rathman? Oh, I don't see you, I'm sorry, was, were the numbers that show up on the RIDE website for October accurate? And if I'm...
And as I, I think I explained that, that the numbers are only as accurate as the day they're reported.
The day, but I mean, as of the October, they didn't input the information differently than the way you sent it in, is what my question is.
Not, the day that you pulled that data, it was accurate on that day, yes.
Okay, right, so, when I look at the numbers, this is what I have a problem understanding. You had, and I'm going to exclude North Smithfield students, that's, that, that bottom category, and I'm just going to look at the four schools, the enrollment with students with IEPs. In October of last year, you had 200, of 14, of 14, I'm sorry, 14, 15, you had 231, and then for this year, 15, 16, we're showing 221, that's minus 10, but you said we gained 17 students over the summer. So to end up with this number of 221, we would have had to start off with 231, and then gain 17, and then lose 27, to end up at 221.
I want to, I want to go back, I first want to say, and I think I explained this before, that we're comparing apples to oranges, it's not about the number of students, it's about the level of service, please let me finish, it's about the level of service. So when I presented this to the committee, and it was a unanimous vote, everyone agreed, I was presenting it as we had started a second grade inclusion class, we started that classroom with four students, we had six significant students move in to make a total of 10, 25 kids in that grade two class, 10 of which had intensive IEPs. We were talking about level of service. When students are entered into census, every single day that number changes, so today you could pull it, it could be 250, tomorrow you could pull it, it could be 259, and the next day it could drop down again. When a student is entered into census, we have to have certain information in order to be able to put that student in, so on the day you pull those numbers in October, many of those new registration students may not have even been entered yet, because we need to have certain data, eligibility is one piece of it, in order to be able to enter their information into census. one piece of it, in order to be able to enter their information into census. So many times my secretary has a stack of students' information that she can't enter into census until the other districts, the sending districts, send us that information. And a big piece of it is eligibility.
Well, I'm not talking about the, the services that the kids have provided. I'm trying to figure out how we get to that number. And if the kids came in in the summer, and I'm assuming that you enrolled them in a, in a special education program, and in order to, you'd, you'd received the IEP from the other school, you'd placed the student with the services that he was required to, you know the eligibility is there when you have the IEP from the other district, don't you?
No, you do not.
So I just don't get the lag time. If you're saying there's lag time from the summer enrollments to updating the numbers for RIDE by October fifteenth, you know, you have so many kids with IEPs, and, and I, so those IEPs that come from other districts, we don't honor them?
You're not understanding, Hugh. There's a process, Mike. There's, there's an IEP which tells us the level of service, and then there's eligibility paperwork which tells us where they qualify. There are fourteen categories where a child can qualify to receive special ed services. They cannot be entered into RIDE unless we know exactly how they qualify. Are they on the autism spectrum disorder? Do they have speech and language impairment? Are they multi-handicapped? Unless we have that information, and we don't always have that, and that is through additional information that comes from the district, sometimes they simply send us an IEP. That eligibility is no longer on the IEP. That may have been maybe when you were teaching, years ago, they used to put the eligibility on the top of the IEP. They no longer do that for confidentiality reasons. So we don't have that information until we receive what's called evaluation team paperwork. Once we have that information, that student gets entered into census. But again, you're asking me to compare apples to oranges. I don't look at those numbers, because many of those students could have been speech-only. I think Mrs. Nato asked me that, students that receive walk-in services. I'm looking at a level of service. I'm really not sure what you're asking me. I feel like, I feel like you're questioning whether or not I made up these seventeen students.
No, I don't understand what you're asking me. I'm a licensed special ed director. I can't understand what you're asking me, and an attorney. I don't understand what you're asking me.
It sounds like what you're saying is, we provide services for the children even though they're not yet entered into the RIDE census?
Correct. RIDE is only asking us to be one hundred percent accurate with census twice a year because they do know that it's ever-changing. So in December, we do our best to be as accurate as we possibly can, and then at the end of the school year in June. But every other month, that census is ever-changing. It's changing every day. There are students that grades, we don't go in and change their grades. There could be students at the high school, for example, who might be juniors in census, okay, with IEPs, but they have taken a course that has graduated them to become a senior. My secretary doesn't go in and change them to a senior, they're still in census, so a lot of the information doesn't get verified and re-verified until those two points in the year, December and June.
Well, it's, you know, I know that you say that we look really hard at the numbers. It's really hard not to. In, in the summer, you came and said you had, because you had seventeen new enrollments, we needed a half-time or a, a teaching assistant. So if that number fluctuates all of the time, if the number drops thirty, do we need to keep the teaching assistant? I mean, it's hard for us to ignore the numbers because requests are made to us based on increasing enrollments and increasing numbers. So it's really impossible for us not to look at the numbers.
But I want to, I want to go back, Mrs. Nato. I didn't come to you, I explained that there were seventeen new registrations, but in my request, it wasn't about actually those seventeen kids. I could have twenty students with IEPs and have one teacher. I could have twenty students with IEPs and have five teachers and six teacher assistants. I came to you because within those seventeen students, there were, at least ten of them had significant IEPs, which means that they were receiving a continuum of special ed services to include maybe related services. They were in self-contained classrooms, they were receiving more than two times a week of service from a special educator. I came based on the need, not necessarily based on the numbers, but I was stressing to you that the students that did move in did come to us with significant IEPs. Oftentimes, we get students move in and it's really just a simple walk-in service, or it's a resource IEP, and it's pretty simple, and we can manage that. But these were students who came to us with high levels of need from other districts, and we need to honor that.
Okay. On several occasions, including in your recent memo to us in your administrative report, you said with the influx of new registrations, we find the momentum of staff and so on. So you're constantly referencing the increase in numbers. So really, I don't think it's appropriate to ask us not to look at the numbers, because we're constantly being faced with proposals where we're asked to look at numbers and to make decisions based on increasing numbers. So I think it's reasonable to ask you about the population.
May I add something? What, I don't think she's asking you not to look at the numbers.
Yeah, I want to, I don't think she's asking that. I think she's, I don't think that's...
You should read the sense of the record.
I think what she's saying, what I'm hearing is that the numbers are very flexible, it's a fluid situation. And frankly, I think that kind of along the lines of what Mr. Raymond had done, I saw that he had submitted some questions ahead of time to Lisa, you know, these numbers are going to be fluid and fluctuating, putting it in writing to Ms. Rathman might be more productive in terms of getting the information that we're looking for, the way John did it.
I did, though, at the first meeting, give her this and said, I don't expect, if you pick, look at page five of that packet.
Yes, I remember that.
I gave it to her and said, I don't expect an answer this evening. But my problem was with, I fully understand kids come with an array of services, and some require a speech, language, you know, X number of minutes, and nothing else. Then you have the heavy-duty that require everything under the sun. My issue was trying to reconcile the number on the RIDE website, two twenty-one, by looking at how many you gained and saying, how do you, you don't come up with that number. If you gained seventeen, you would have had to lost twenty-seven. I hear what you're saying now about, you know, entering later or whatever. I still kind of don't understand it totally, but I think it would be helpful if, in the future, because I do look at numbers, and Meredith came from the budget committee, she looks at numbers, and we are always being said, because of the numbers, because of the numbers. So if you could, from now on, when you give us this breakdown that you gave us last month and started to do that, if you could identify, okay, like, you know, you know, okay, we gained seventeen and I lost seven, or, or something like that, like the building principals, or the, whoever filled out that form for...
Or come straight from census.
Whoever filled out the form that we were given this month for showing the enrollment fluctuations in the, in the different schools, how many entered during the month, how many left during the month, that's kind of helpful too, rather than just, how many do we gain?
That's what we do every month, forever. That's what we do, and you get it in your packet. But that doesn't connect to special ed.
And I am curious to know, and if you could just shoot that off in an email or provide it to everybody at the next meeting, how many of, how many kids of the kids that you provided the counts for with IEPs at the different grade levels, how many of them are just speech and language?
I would say...
I don't, I'm not asking that now. I'm saying, you know, could you, at some point in time, tell us how many kids we have with speech and language only?
Yes, but I, I guess I'm asking, what's the purpose of that? I'm trying to explain to you. I, I don't want to give you identified information either if we have a small number of students who are speech-only.
Well, I don't think, maybe it will be, but it wasn't any...
Well, under the regulations, a child adds a speech-only child can only receive services until the age of nine. That also has changed in special ed regs. I just, I don't know if you're aware of that. So it would be only my little ones, that would be walk-in speech?
Which is where you had the problem this year.
At the elementary school. North Smithfield Elementary was where you had the problem.
But not with my walk-in, not like...
No, no, with, with your staffing and your programs that you had and the influx of the kids who needed those services.
Correct, but they weren't just speech-only students. There were students, as I stated earlier, with hefty IEPs.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I would love to know the number of IEPs at each grade level with speech only. And I'm also kind of curious to see, you know, I noticed the, the staffing needs and the, and I'd like to see what the caseload is of, you know, high school students, because I'm, I'm assuming that as a student progresses, you're going to have speech improvement and eventually exit, and, and the, the number at the high school level should be far less than the elementary level. And I understand there are some kids who still continue to need to read those, receive those services at the high school level, but I just kind of would like to see, how many are at, you know, how many at each grade level are, are IEPs for speech and language only?
I just explained that to you. As of the age of nine, they no longer can receive speech only.
Oh, under the new, under the new regs?
Under the new regulations.
Okay, okay.
So you will not have a child older than nine that receives only speech. The only way they can have speech is if it is in conjunction with other services on their IEP.
Okay, okay, get you. Okay. And at the elementary level, how many just IEPs? Because I would think that's a high number.
It would be students anywhere between the ages of three and nine. It would be a small number.
Okay. Would it be a small number, really?
I think Ms. Rathman...
It could be at any given time.
I think Ms. our director is concerned about, and I understand it. Mike, I know you want the numbers, and I think a lot of people want the numbers. It's always a tricky thing with the numbers, but by that, I mean, as Ms. Rathman has said, you have to be careful about identifying people. And, you know, people talk about the rules. I'll give you the rules right now. It's the FERPA, Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, twenty U.S. Code twelve thirty-two G. And you want the federal regulations? It's thirty-four, quarter federally released, it's part ninety-nine. I'm not going to pass them out, but I have copies if somebody wants to look at them. I just gave you the site, and it's very clear in there about the numbers. You have to be very careful with the numbers. And all I'm just saying, I think all the information that you're, you're seeking can be obtained, but I think you also have to respect Ms. Rathman needs some time to put this material together.
Sure, I agree, though. I'm not, absolutely.
Maybe we can get down to numbers someday, and we all can visit some programs that we're operating, so you can see firsthand what we're doing, because they're outstanding programs.
I would very much love for you to come and visit the programs. I would love for you to see the transition program at the high school. They would love to maybe make dinner for you one night, have a school committee meeting there. I would love for you to see what they're doing, because we have an amazing program, and we've gotten kudos from the state for having a great transition program for our eighteen to twenty-one-year-old students. So I would love for you to come. I would love for you to come and see my self-contained preschool, that students are doing miraculously well there. Parents are very, very happy, and we've gotten kudos from families. And that's, that's what's dear to my heart, than when, when I do what I need to do for my kids and for my families. So when I stand before you and I ask for help, I ask for help for my children. I'm not asking for help for myself. I'm asking because my kids need it. They have IEPs that require those services, and we as a district need to do what's right for our kids.
Okay.
Mrs. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi had a question for you?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to know if we don't provide those services, do you go outside the district and get them?
I have, yes. It would be very costly. In the, in the respect of, of needing a more restrictive placement, it would require an outside placement. Those could range anywhere from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand a year.
By the way, we have to pay for that.
Yes, we do.
Suzanne, would you consider that, one of our graduates that spoke at the Trust Dinner last year, I'd, I'd love for the school committee to meet him and his mom, because I guess he gave a wonderful speech.
He did.
It'd be great if, if the committee's willing to meet him and have him come here. It'd be awesome if he's, if he's willing to come.
Okay. All your questions, Karen.
Let's up the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, I, I had a chance to work with, he's a special ed teacher, and I was administrator for a couple of summer programs, and I've seen a lot of different professors, and I just think Ms. Rathman does a really great job for us, and I'm really happy that we have her, and I want to be on the record for saying that, it was a real good job for her. And, you know, I would just propose too, and be happy, my schedule's busy, our schedules are all busy, you know, we have a lot of liaisons. I'm not, I'm not saying we do it tonight, but at some point, you want a special ed liaison or someone to work with it, help, maybe get the help, or if that, if Ms. Rathman's okay with that, I'd be happy to serve in that regard. Again, I'm not nominating it tonight or anything, just something to think about down the road.
Thank you. Any other comment on that item? The next item on the agenda is the operating budget forecast, Mrs. Markcott.
So, so I'm going to go, you asked me to do a projection through December 31st. So the projection is in your packet. At this time, we're looking very healthy for this year. And I'd like to mention that the projection, again, is taken at a point in time, and it is expected to change as we go through the year.
And as of this point in time, you're anticipating seven hundred thousand dollars surplus?
Yep, about two point nine percent increase over the, over what we have budgeted.
You want to be, I, I think it'd be probably responsible if we read the cover memo so people know for the record what, how that came about, as part of your report, please.
So we're projecting that the salaries and benefits will have a combined balance of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. The anticipated balance is in excess of the two hundred thousand dollar turnover allowance that was built into the budget this year. The savings was realized as follows. In administration, we had one retirement, two resignations. The remaining balance in the administration increase line item also contributed to that. We had two retirements in the area of certified teachers, seven resignations, two unpaid leaves thus far this year, total of forty thousand dollars. Support staff, we had two custodial positions that remained vacant for about six months. We had one unpaid leave of absence thus far this year, ending up with a savings of nine thousand dollars in that area. Unemployment, we had ten thousand dollars remaining. We did not have any unemployment claims this year, so that is exactly what we budgeted. And the recalculation of the retirement benefits resulting from the retirement reform. Central office, the savings in the central office was basically from decreasing the cost of diesel fuel that we didn't anticipate. At the Wintucket Area Career and Technical Center, we had eighteen students last year at the end of the year, and that's what we budgeted for. This year, we only had fi-, uh, eight, so that was a difference of ten students. And I just wanted to note that the discussions with that go ongoing, and any savings that will be resulting from those discussions are not reflected in here, so any savings would be in addition to this. In the area of facilities, we had a decrease in cost in propane and oil, and a decrease in the usage based on the unanticipated mild weather that we've had so far this year. Pupil personnel services, the number of students in our district placements are lower than anticipated thus far this year also.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Markcott, or comments, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I don't...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Can you just explain, Lisa, why it's showing, with the two, how much, I guess I'm confused by the teacher, savings in the teacher's account, certified teachers. In the point-in-time projection sheet page, we're showing for salaries eighty-six thousand seven hundred in savings, and with the numbers that you've indicated, with the total, if you turn to page one in this, the one, the first page that's numbered, for certified teachers, it's showing only twenty thousand dollars projected towards the surplus. I'm confused by that.
So, in the budget, the turnover allowance is in the certified teacher line, so regardless of the turnover elsewhere, it's actually budgeted in the certified teacher line, so you have to take that into account. So we're making up the hundred fifty technically, if you're doing apples to apples with the budget to this, the hundred and fifty is in that teacher line?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, two hundred. So the one fifty that we made up in turnover just in teachers alone, we were actually deficit technically fifty grand in that line. However, we're anticipating that our substitutes, we don't have that many, the teachers can speak to that, that, that we're going to come in under, so that's going to help balance that line out. But our turnover is fully in the certified teacher line.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Lisa, how would you describe your forecasting? Conservative, progressive?
Conservative.
Okay.
You knew that.
I knew that.
Because included in this, you've only looked at the expenditures. So the additional state aid above and beyond what was budgeted would add to the surplus? And the additional revenue you receive from Medicaid, is it Medicare or Medicaid? I forget which one.
We have projected that we're going to receive additional revenue of Medicaid this year again, and the bottom line right now for the revenue is very close to what we budgeted. I'm not showing that much of an excess, because as you know, the sixty thousand for the, the committed is being tracked in a different fund. is being tracked in a different fund. So the, the reduction of that sixty thousand from the general fund revenue was offset by the fifty-one and some other miscellaneous revenue that we brought in.
And what's the, is it Medicaid or Medicaid? I forget. I don't have a...
Medicaid.
Medicaid. What's it running year-to-date? Who did you get it to last year, year-to-date?
Um, I haven't really, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look that up for you.
Because that was a big number last year.
But it, it really, sometimes you really can't gauge it by that. It all depends on when they have filled out the forms and submitted them for reimbursement.
Well, I think we only budgeted like two hundred and five thousand for revenue, and you collected what?
Two or five.
Two or five, two hundred and five thousand, and you, you actually collected two hundred and eighty-something last year, right? So I, and you...
Could have been around there.
Okay. Unless you lost some heavy-duty students, it should be, I'm wondering how that's going to be impacted by the Nebraska program when we're now doing the in-house. Is that, since that'll lower those costs, are you going to get less reimbursement for that? Never mind. I'll wait and see.
I can answer that question. Medicaid is based on students' eligibility, so it won't change, given where they are. We may get a little bit less reimbursement for the actual tuition. But it's, Medicaid is based on students' eligibility, and the reason we got so much money back was because in the past, parents weren't signing Medicaid forms at meetings, and I made sure that the teachers had the parents sign them, so that we could access those, that area, to see how many more students were Medicaid reimbursable. We have the forms signed, but sometimes families are not Medicaid reimbursable.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on the forecast today?
Mary Ann, did you want to read the rest of the memo, or did you want to stop there?
I don't know. Leanne has a question.
Well, I didn't, I, I really was going to ask for, to put a motion on the table, because I was reading ahead. And knowing that we've taken quite a bit of money out of the facility's committed rentals account, if we have this projection, I would like to make a motion to put forty-four thousand eighty dollars back into the committed rentals from, from that projection.
I think it's a good idea.
To get that money back in there for Ms. Tech, to make sure we can take care of things that we need to take care of.
So the motion's to consider, I'm sorry.